So I'd like to call to order the March 27th meeting of the New Canaan Public Schools Board of Education. And in front of you, you have the minutes from our March 6th meeting. And when you've had a chance to take a look at it, if I could get a motion to approve those minutes. Tom? Second. Hazel? All those in favor? Um, is, yeah, uh, let's see. Penny?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay. So it's, um, and then all those abstaining? We have one. Okay. Um, thank you. And if we could move on to the review and approval of the agenda. If you take a look at the agenda, could I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Sherri, second. Brendan. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition. The first item on our agenda is the Board of Ed appreciation. And I think the first item on our Board of Ed appreciation is to acknowledge the retirement and service of our facilities director, Mr. Robert Willoughby. Bob, would you come forward, Bob, to maybe to the chair at least, so we can see you?
Yeah.
Or the podium, so we can all see you and acknowledge your service.
I'm not gonna sing, I'm fine.
Oh, you're not gonna sing? Okay.
Dance?
Anyway, um, well, I would just like to say that I know I speak for the entire board when I say that we will all miss you dearly. But we wish you and your wife Roxanne, who is here with you tonight, I see her in the back, an amazing retirement filled with golf, boating, and Tennessee football games, and very few mornings of 4:00 AM calls and hour-long drives in the snow. You've set a very high bar for the next facilities manager. The board has been impressed with your expertise that you brought to your role and your unwavering commitment to providing the cleanest, safest, and most comfortable facilities for the learning of more than 400 and 4,260 students in the New Canaan Public Schools district. And you did it with the highest standards of professionalism and courtesy. We can't thank you enough for your commitment to the district. You also helped improve the coordination with our town. And I have a guest here this evening who I think would like to say a few words to you, who's, uh, first selectman Malazi?
That's why he's here. Hi, everybody. Thanks for, for having me. I would be remiss if I didn't express on behalf of the town, uh, my, my deep feelings for you. You have been a real pleasure to work with. Sherri West, when you were at the West School PTC, you bought a lot of stuff from, had the school buy a lot of stuff from Bob Sports. And the first time I met him was before I was first selectman, we were putting in basketball units at West School. And that's, you were brand new to the job, and I think I just won this office, but I hadn't gone, started yet. But we hit it off immediately. And, um, you know, it's one thing for me to hit it off immediately with him, but honestly, everyone in our town has hit it off immediately with this gentleman. And I'm gonna miss you incredibly, appreciate all your honesty and your efforts. You've found more efficiencies in buildings than I could ever imagine, and you've been a real credit to the town. So I want to wish you, on behalf of the town and myself personally, all the best, as, as Deanna just did. So best luck, pal.
Thanks, Rob.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I think we have another member of the board who you've been working quite closely with in the last, gosh, year and a half.
That's true. So I'm, I'm in denial. But I had the pleasure to work with Bob on both, as a Board of Ed member, and then on the South School Building Committee and the Saks Building Committee. And to each one of those jobs and roles and responsibilities, you brought your prodigious talents and impressed us and made every, every item a safer, better product for the schools. So you basically, you upped our game, so now we're gonna have to stay at this new high level. And I thought, you know, I was impressed from day one by your competence, by the pride you took in your work, by your commitment to it, and, and really by your collegiality. I mean, there were so many bumps in these building projects and, and in the schools. I mean, when the front of Saks was coming off one year. And, and I always knew that you would find a solution that was economically efficient and get it done quickly and professionally. Your great contacts in the industry showed the strength that you've been, had in this whole, in this whole area for your professional life. And so thank you personally, and mostly for the students and the staff at the New Canaan Public Schools for doing such a wonderful job. I'm going to follow your golf handicap, so I hope you keep it, because I know when you turn all that talent and dedication to your golf game, it's gonna drop like a rock, and I'll enjoy watching that. So thank you again for everything.
Thank you, Penny. I appreciate that. You've been really a good friend and a, and a good colleague when we, we work on these projects, and I really appreciate that. I will miss you also.
Thank you. Thank you. I can open it up to the board if anyone would like to see anything, or, um, if, oh, Hazel. Go ahead.
We both started, I think, on the same night, or close to it, as far as when I was first chair of the board and, and going to meetings and working all along. At that point, there were a number of things that had been put off as far as budget squeezes, and we started working on some projects, and really the work that you've done to really update all the schools. I always knew, no matter what the choice was gonna be, whatever was the best for the students was what you were working on. And it was a true labor of love for you and so conscientious for it. I feel very fortunate to have been able to have worked with you. Good luck.
Thank you, Hazel. I appreciate that, especially coming from a gal from Tennessee.
Yeah. Thank you.
I had to take this moment to thank you too personally. It's been such a pleasure getting to know you, and I feel like you're a pillar of this whole district. And I can't imagine, I'm just like, you're one of, like, the buildings, they just stays here and it's always been dependable and responsible and around, and I can't imagine you leaving. And I know when you first mentioned that you were thinking of retiring and going to Tennessee, I was thinking like, oh, no, you can't. But I do know that you need to move on, and you've done such a wonderful job here with everything. And I also wanted to comment, in addition to what everyone else has said, is just that your demeanor, I mean, this is not an easy job, I mean, coming at 3:00 in the morning or when a pipe breaks or whatever happens, and no matter what happened, you would never lose your cool. You're very calm, which helps to have everyone else work with you and stay calm and figure out what the solution was. And you always figured out how to make it work, you know, so the kids could be at school every single day that they needed to be, and, you know, the faculty could get in and out, and, and made it, the job seemed simple, and it's not. So I thank you for that, 'cause that's not an easy thing to do. And like I said, you're a terrific guy, and I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna cut anybody off, but Bob, if you could come up, we have a very small token of our appreciation for your service to the district. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you, so.
Thanks very much.
Congratulations on your return?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
You know, Bob was, Bob was one of the first people that I met at New Canaan. I was, I had just accepted the position as principal of the high school six years ago, and I came down with my wife and family to have some lunch and to meet some people. And so we had, we had lunch down on Forest Street, and we were riding, jumping in the elevator to go up to see the superintendent, David Abbey, and there's Bob in the elevator, riding the other way. Bob met my family and my daughters, and he got off, we went off to go talk to David, and just from that, from that very first moment, I knew that you were a quality person who came with so much knowledge and experience into the district. And as high school principal, I worked very closely with you. As superintendent, you're higher up on my speed dial, I think, than Jody most of the time.
Hopefully she's now watching.
She knows better than, yeah. But no, she would, she would also admit it, because you're one of the only people with the courage to call my house at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning. And you're right that, about Bob always being calm and always having a plan and knowing how to resolve the issues, 'cause I was usually the person on the other line, other side of the line, who he was trying to calm down, you know, about things that come up unexpectedly. But there was never, I always knew there was never a problem we couldn't solve, couldn't figure out, and always looked to you for the experience and wisdom we needed to do things right. It's gonna be hard to fill, fill your shoes, but you've also taught all of us quite a bit, so we're certainly better off now than we would've been without you. And you can be confident that hopefully you've taught us enough as we continue forward, and look forward to hearing from you and Roxanne and the great things that you're doing, and you keeping your hand in it and working on that house and keeping your construction projects going. As Penny said, that golf game is probably most important. So enjoy. Thank you, Bob. It's been a pleasure and an honor.
Thank you. I, um, over the six years that I've been here, I've really enjoyed everyone here. This is a wonderful community. It was easy to come to work and work with people like all of you and the staffs, and it, it's just been a pleasure. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
And I will get that handicap down. Thank you.
And while we're saying thanks, I just wanna take a, a very brief moment to say thank you to our outstanding Board of Education as well. You may or may not know, March is Board of Education Appreciation Month. And Board members play a crucial role in all school systems, and I think our school system more than most. With great confidence, I say that the, the Board of Education here in New Canaan consists of the most talented, dedicated Board members that you're ever going to find. Now, I'm frequently asked by people about the secrets to New Canaan's success, and I truly believe that one key ingredient to the secret of New Canaan's success is the outstanding Board of Education. So on behalf of our students, our teachers, our staff, parents, and the entire community, I just want to say thank you for all that you do every day to sustain and build upon the excellence of the New Canaan Public Schools. I think the schools are what they are thanks to all of you, thanks to all of the great work you do, the time that you put into the district and helping all of us to be our very best. So much of it happens in, in so many different ways, and truly, it's, it's a blessing for all of us to have such a talented, dedicated, supportive Board of Education. And so just, tonight's the night, we just get to say thank you to you as well for all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Lexi.
It's my pleasure.
All right. The next item on our agenda this evening is a K through 8 reading update with Ms. Green and Ms. Broas, is that correct? How do I pronounce Broas?
Gross.
Gross. Sorry.
Sarah Bros.
Sorry.
Bros. Bros. Glad Jill take it from here. Glenn and Sarah.
I guess call her Sarah.
Yeah, Sarah.
I can do that with a teacher.
Okay. Age before beauty, so I'm starting.
Well, first of all, can I just introduce Sarah? How about you, Glenn?
Oh, thanks, Jill.
I'm not sure if we've officially introduced Sarah Bros as our 5 through 8 ELA coordinator over at the middle school. As you may recall, this was a new position that we hired last year to move this into a full-time position. So we're very excited to have Sarah give us an understanding of the 5 through 8 approach to teaching of English language arts, but really tonight will be mainly a focus on reading. And of course, it's, we are very privileged to have Glenn returning.
Again.
And as you all know, Glenn will be retiring this spring, so we thought it was, you know, very fitting that she come and do her last presentation to the board. So now, I would like to introduce Glenn Green and Sarah.
Thank you.
I don't know what I'm gonna do after I retire. You may read articles about some crazy woman in the middle of a bookstore in New York lecturing parents and trying to give their kids books, but anyway. I've always enjoyed this a lot, so.
You can sit down, just relax. You're good. You're good.
Sarah and I have actually known each other a really long time. Sarah was a student at Meeting House Hill School when my husband David was principal. And, uh, this is just such, you don't mind, do you? You don't mind. I didn't tell her I was gonna tell it, but. He had a writing contest for the whole school, and he said whoever, he picked the best essays, and those children got to go to a Mets game with the Green family. So, yes, we all went to a Mets game. So, yeah, when we made that connection, that was really, that was crazy, right? That was, so anyway. I know, I know. Now I'm terrified to drive down there, but anyway. I also just want to acknowledge my wonderful reading team of reading consultants, they are here, they're always so supportive, and they, they, any one of them could step up here and, and give this program, and, uh, they just are the most knowledgeable and hard-working group, and, and I depend on them every single day, so. They are, would you just stand up? I promise I won't embarrass you individually if you just stand up as a group. Thank you. Thank you. And the other team is my wonderful colleagues, my team of coordinators. We all work so closely together, sitting in the row right back from there. Karen and I work so closely, because Karen's writing coordinator, and then of course Zoe and math coordinator, and Mary Hannah, social studies, and Melinda, science. So, and we've become so close, it's really gonna be hard to leave you guys, too. So, at any rate, now I want you to meet a friend of mine, Zorro. I thought it would be good to start off talking about what we really do in reading, and I was in a kindergarten class, this was about a month ago, and they were doing a, a unit called Thinking and Talking About Books. And this was one of the interactive Read Alouds that we had purchased, thanks to you all for the funding, so that the teachers could read appropriate books for this unit. The children were totally engaged in this book, and I just want to share a little bit with you. Zorro is a little pug. Remember, these are kids who are five, they've been alive for five years. So we choose the books very carefully to enable them to have discussions about it, but also not being inappropriate for how old they are, you know? We want them to be able to relate. The day began like any other for Zorro and Mr. Bud, and that's Zorro, he's the pug, and that's Mr. Bud, his, his buddy. They had their biscuits and they were ready for their walk. But there was a delay. "Zorro," and this is in the background, "I have a surprise for you." And look at Zorro's face, I don't know if you could see it from there, but they're going, "Now what? Come on, come on. Look, your very own outfit. Let's see if it fits." Now, look at Zorro, okay? He's not happy at all. Zorro was embarrassed. And everyone laughs at him on the walk. Eddie and the boys all laughed and teased him. It was terrible, it was humiliating. Even Slim, the cat, made fun of him in his outfit. And in the park, Mr. Bud tried to cheer up Zorro, but it didn't work. Now, you have to realize, the children are absolutely riveted, and what, the teacher knows when to stop and to have them turn and talk, and talk about what they're seeing, and if they can relate to what Zorro is feeling right then, and they do. And, and they thought it was terribly wrong that he was forced to wear something that he didn't want to wear, and they had this really great discussion. I, I, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I did want to tell you that the way it's resolved is there's this other really cool dog who comes with an outfit on, so Zorro feels better, and it all works out. But anyway, I knew that you were worried about it, I know, I could tell, there's some dog lovers here. But, this was a month ago. A week ago, my husband and I were babysitting down here in New Canaan for our four-year-old grandson and his one-year-old brother, and I decided to read Zorro to, to our grandson, and I did. And we didn't have a deep discussion, 'cause he's four, and, and I decided not to push it, and I'm hoping he doesn't tell the kindergarten teacher next year that I read him Zorro, but anyway, that's another issue. Um, so then about three hours later, my husband and I are driving home, you know, and David turns to me and he goes, he goes, "You know, I really felt for him. I really understood how he felt." And I'm going, "Who?" Uh, yeah, I thought he meant our son or, or his kids, or... And he goes, "Zorro." What? He had really been thinking about it, and then this whole story came out about how his mother used to always buy him clothes, and he never liked them, and he had to wear them. It was like a therapy session. It was hilarious. But it really showed me how children's books really appeal to, they have a universal appeal, whether you are five years old or whether you're 70 years old, you can still take lessons. It's literature, and we still, you know, it means something to us, and we still make connections with it. So, would you like to do the next slide? Yeah, the first slide. I told you. I told you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We do want to tell you just a little bit about what reading really means. Hazel, I know that you've seen this part of the presentation, so I apologize for the repetition. Um, you know, it's very complicated. You have to hear the sounds of language and match those sounds to print. You have to recognize letters and words, you have to read with fluency at an appropriate rate with intonation and phrasing, you have to know vocabulary, and then, of course, the really important thing is that you have to comprehend what you read. It's very complex, and it's really on a developmental continuum. You know, kids don't always learn at the same time as other kids, so we really understand that with the children that we work with. In other words, these are the parts to our reading program right here. Phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. The beginning, really, I will be talking more about, and then Sarah will be talking more about the vocabulary and comprehension part, because we start off with those sounds of language and matching the sounds to print, but everything ends up leading to comprehension. That's the important thing to remember. Reading is thinking, and we try to get kids to be metacognitive or think about, understand their own thinking, and know when they are not really paying close attention to what they're reading. We've all done that. We have all, well, I think we've all done it, I do it all the time. When you're, you're trying to read something and you know you need to read it, but your mind is wandering, and then you stop for a minute and you go, "Oh, I guess I didn't, I wasn't really paying much attention there." Or what I end up doing is I always read before I go to bed, and then when I look at the book the next night, I'll go, "I think I'd better go back and, and reread a little, because obviously I was not paying attention and thinking as I read that end part." So it's very complicated. And for most children, learning to read really does take instruction and a lot of practice and sometimes support, because our brains aren't really naturally wired to, to read, they're naturally wired to speak, but not really to read and write. We're gonna start with word study, because we're very excited about a new program that we're using. And we'll start with phonemic awareness, which is part of this program. That's all about identifying sounds, and it's why we love using rhyming books with kids, because we want them to hear sounds and be able to distinguish between sounds. And before they even learn to look at print and understand print, they need to understand how the sounds work. So "cat," as you can see, has three sounds. C, I can't do it so that you'll hear it. C, a, t. I exaggerated that, I know everyone is criti, getting ready to criticize me because I did not make the sounds properly, but I was afraid you couldn't hear them. I tell parents all the time, please read a lot of rhyming books with your kids. Then we get to phonics, and that's the relationship between those letters and sounds. And we are using a wonderful program called Foundations. And every day that children will come in, and it's multisensory, they will, could you just go back one slide, Sarah? Good. They will always go over the different sounds with their teacher. I, I should've brought it, there's this wonderful owl called Echo the Owl, it's a stuffed owl, and, um, she'll go, "Now, echo me," you know? A, apple, ah. B, bat, buh. C, cat, kuh. Every single child will know those sounds, and that will be the basis to learn the spelling They learn, oh, well, I'm gonna get to that in a minute, but it, this is the basic, the basic sounds that they learn. We are doing Foundations this year in kindergarten and first grade, and it's been, it's been really successful. I have not heard, the teachers all love it, I haven't heard one complaint, and they usually feel very free to tell me when, when there's something that's not really going that well. And the children are always engaged. Every time I go into a classroom that's doing Foundations, they're all really involved. Um, we're starting it in second grade next year, and then we'll make a decision, or whoever's here will make a decision with the team and with the teachers about whether to extend it to third grade, but it's gone very, very well. Okay. Yep. I wanted to put these pictures up, 'cause it shows, like, the little girl in the one slide has a little Echo the Owl that's on a stick. He looks a little uncomfortable, but it's okay, I've gotten over that. And she, and she points, and she runs the classroom. The kids all get a chance to come up and point to the letters while the other children will repeat them. And then you'll see the handwriting component of Foundations. The kids do a lot of work, they do a lot of air writing, they write on their whiteboards, they're involved all the time. So it really teaches phonics, spelling, vocabulary, handwriting, sight words or trick words, and, and we're just, we couldn't be happier right now with how it's going. And the kids are really engaged, it's not boring. So we really, I, I wanted you to know that we, we write our units of study painstakingly and revise them every year. Teachers are involved, we do a ton of research, and we listen, we look at what the research tells us good readers do, and then we really look at every single child and see what those chi, children need in every classroom. So it's, it's a pretty complex process. I want to take a quick look at what the research tells us. It says that you're, you can be a better reader if you can activate some prior knowledge before, during, and after reading. That means, for instance, if you are reading, let's say, a fantasy book, and you've read another fantasy book, you kind of know what to expect. So maybe by the time you get to reading Harry Potter, you've read Sylvester and the Magic Pebble and a whole bunch of fantasy books in the lower grades, so that you'll really understand what it's all about, what a genre is all about. Prior knowledge, you always base the new on what is known, so the more a child reads, the more prior knowledge they will have about reading. Sometimes we read books that we really love where we need to provide a little prior knowledge, like Number the Stars is a fourth grade text that is beautifully written, and it's about a girl and her family who live in Denmark who shelter a Jewish family from the Nazis. We have to provide a little bit of background knowledge there, you know, just so the kids will be able to put it in some sort of context. I'm thinking of another one, The Wall by Eve Bunting, is a beautiful picture book that talks about the Vietnam War memorial, and, which is such a moving monument. It's a beautiful story, very appropriate for children, but we always want to make sure that they know exactly what that monument is before we start. Determining important ideas and themes in texts is always important right up through the grades. When we talk about main idea, we're really talking about nonfiction or informational text. Do you understand the gist of it? Can you, can you share it? Can you, um, tell us what you just read and what you think the author was, what the point was of, of the paragraph or the text that you just read? And then, of course, we have theme, which is getting a bit deeper. It's saying, is there some, can you draw any kind of message from this? It's saying, is there some, can you draw any kind of message from this text? The one that I just wanted to mention is a book called Mr. Puskins, A Love Story. And the reason I wanted to mention Mr. Puskins is that I have done it with adults and also used it with children. And it's so interesting, the different reactions. So what they bring to it is all very different. It is, well, you have to look at the end papers. Okay, Mr. Puskins. Seems to be losing it a little bit there. This is the story of a little girl called Emily and her dear cat, Mr. Puskins. Emily adored Mr. Puskins. Each morning she would invent fun games for Mr. Puskins to play. In the afternoon, she'd brush his long fur coat and tell him, "Oh, Mr. Puskins, what a handsome boy you are. I do love you ever so much." And each night she would snuggle up with Mr. Puskins and read him a special story, but Mr. Puskins never listened. I read this in Laura Barbosa's first grade recently, and the look on their faces, oh, he didn't listen. They were shocked. The girl's constant babbling, blah, 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 blah bored his whiskers off. He wanted more than this dull life. So one night, he left. You could hear the gasp in the room. They were just appalled. He went places he wasn't meant to go and did things he wasn't meant to do and made friends with the pesky cat gang. Life without Emily was such naughty fun. I will tell you, I had to stop there with these first graders because they were just absolutely shocked that this cat could be so rebellious. I will tell you, when I read this to parents of incoming kindergarteners, naughty fun was a totally different thing. And I don't know, then I was reading it to first graders, and I expected a laugh, and I was, and they were like, oh! You know, it's just so funny. I will tell you how it ends, just because I know you want to know. They end up getting together, and the kids realize, I wrote down some notes in my Reader's Notebook, they said, "Well, he learned his lesson, and he was lonely and, you know, thank goodness he came back home." They were just absolutely appalled. And I had to leave the book there for quite a while so that they could keep looking at it and looking at the pictures and talking about it some more. The other, the next piece that I wanted to mention is asking questions. Really good readers, when you're really engaged, you're asking questions all the time. If you don't understand something, you're saying, "Oh, wait a minute, what does that mean? I don't really understand it. I need to stop for a minute and see." Or you might be asking, "I wonder what's going to happen," and anticipating some things that are going to happen. But you are always engaged in asking questions. You also, and this is really tough for kids now, you need to create visual and sensory images from the text. So when you read this beautiful descriptive language, you want the children to be able to imagine it in their heads. Very, very important. And it's hard because everybody has a screen in front of them now, so there's not as much opportunity to do that. And I told this story, but I, a lot of new people here, so I'm going to tell it again. When, no, I think it's like, okay, we know this one. It's about Island of the Blue Dolphins. Yep, they could tell it. I was teaching, we were reading that book in a fifth grade class at East School when fifth grade was there. And we read the book, and they adored the book. It's a very well-written book by Scott Odell. And I was able to get a movie. And I said, "Well, we'll compare the book and the movie." The first thing they said was, after they saw the movie, they said, "You know, the pictures in the book are a lot better than the ones in the movie." And I picked up the book, and I said, "What pictures?" There weren't pictures in the book. What they were saying was the pictures in their heads were so much better and so much more real because they were their pictures. Drawing inferences is very difficult for young children, and we work on it starting in kindergarten, but it takes time because children are so literal. When you make an inference, it means that the author has suggested something but not made it explicit. So you have to make a decision what the author really meant based on the evidence of the text. That's very difficult, but we work on it really hard. And retelling, summarizing and synthesizing what they read, very, very important. Especially summarizing. That takes a lot of skill, and it's very hard to do. If you've ever asked a little child to, if you ever say, "So, what did you do this weekend?" They can't summarize. They will tell you from the time the weekend started, every single thing that happened until the end. As they get older, they're better able to just get the gist of something and the important things. And then, of course, using fix-up strategies to help your comprehension when it breaks down. Children who are really paying attention, all of us who are really paying attention, we can do that. We can stop and repair, repair it when it's broken. Good readers are always thinking, and that's the biggest thing of all. You have to really be thinking all the time. Your brain is working. That is in a kindergarten classroom, what an inviting place to do independent reading. Then the two things that we think are so important and are in our program, and I'm going to show you how they're there, is that there are two things that are the basis of every reading program. One is reading aloud to children, and the other is independent reading by children. They are both absolutely critical. You know, I was looking at these pictures, and I was laughing because if my mother were here, she's been gone a long time, but you know what she would say to me? She'd look at the kids on the floor and she'd say, "What? You don't have chairs?" She was always very pragmatic, and I would have to explain to her. Anyway, go ahead. This research was done back in 1985, and it is still true. Nothing has ever, you know, said that it was wrong. It's been proven over and over that reading aloud is the single most important activity for building the knowledge that kids need for success in reading. It's critical, especially for our young children, but really right up through, I think I read to my kids through middle school, or to my son anyway. I don't think I read to my daughter then because she wouldn't let me, but kids like to be read to. Reading aloud does all these things. The best thing, I think, is that it's pleasurable, and it helps children realize that reading is fun, that it's pleasurable. And it also helps kids experience a text that's above their independent reading level. So we're going to talk a little about independent reading. Independent reading is critical, and the more kids read, the better they get. And we really see with our readers that they come with the confidence and the skills and the background knowledge that they need, even when they come to us in kindergarten. You can tell the children who have, and had an exposure to stories right away. And then as kids get older, you can see when kids are readers, schoolwork is just so much easier for them and so much better. I was, you know, my, this lovely lady who does my hair was complaining to me one day that she thought that the SATs were really unfair, kids were taking the SATs. And I said, "Why?" And she said, "Because you do better if you read." I was like, "Yeah." Yeah. I didn't even know what to say. Yes, that's true. I guess it's how you look at it, but anyway. This is really interesting, and again, this was from some research from 1996, but it's really amazing. If, by fifth grade, if children want to make grade-level progress, they should be reading more than 1.1 million words a year of outside-school reading. 25 to 35 books, which should take 15 to 30 minutes a night. I'm always saying to parents, don't think of reading as something that you stop on the weekends because you don't have school. And when you have vacation, I go in at the end of the year to a lot of classrooms, and we'll, I'll talk to the teachers, what do you have on your, you know, on your list to read for the summer? And get the kids talking about that because it's so important. It's absolutely critical. There is a real cycle of student learning, and I, it's funny, Sarah and I were talking, and she said, "I might use soccer as an analogy," and of course, I was using tennis as an analogy. But when you think about how you learn a sport, and I was thinking of tennis, where, you know, you have to learn to do a whole lot of things, just like you do when you learn to read. You have to run, and you have to bend and serve and hit backhands and hit overheads and have a net game. You have to be able to run up to net. And so beginning players go to clinics, and everybody learns the basic skills, right? But then the tennis pro and his or her assistants are watching, and as they watch the players, they will see that some have a really great serve and some don't. So that might mean that they would pull the kids who needed to work on their serve for a bit. Or they might notice that they weren't running, and so they might take a group, I call it a little strategy group, and work on them, work with them about how you need to move faster. So they're really all the time analyzing to see what is happening and who needs what, breaking up into groups and giving people a chance to practice what they need. And then they pull everybody back and they put them in a playing situation, and the whole thing starts all over again. Then you're kind of assessing who needs what. Same thing with reading, and we're going to show you how we break down our reading block. This is four, K through five. I talked a little about the interactive read aloud, which really allows kids, you know, we're not just saying, "Okay, this is what you should think about, Mr. Puskins." We're letting the kids figure it out based on what the author is telling them, and we're giving them, allowing them to let their voices be heard. Shared reading is very important. It's when we look at a text very closely. With younger children, it might be a big book, and the teacher might be teaching certain types of words. They might be teaching punctuation, whatever it is, they are really looking at the text very closely. As kids get older, they'll put a chunk of text up on their smartboard, and they might be using it to help kids break down a really difficult text for comprehension. Or they might be looking at vocabulary, or they might be looking at grammar. Whatever it is, they're looking very closely. We do close reading all the time. I was doing it recently, you'll laugh, but this is the owner's manual for my Jetta, and I was doing close reading on the section called Clocks: How to Reset. Every year, I have to go in, and it's hard. I don't know why it's so hard. But you know, there's a lot of times when we have to look at texts like that and just go through it step by step and break it down and look at the diagrams, and then we can figure it out. But that's really what we're doing with shared reading. We're giving the kids the strategy so that they can do that. Guided reading is when we bring groups together of kids who are around the same level, reading around the same level of text, and we're helping them with the strategies to get up to the next level of text. There's, on our website, on the curriculum website, there is a whole handout for parents about each level of text, and it tells a little about it and what books represent examples of that level. So it is on our curriculum website, and I've had a lot of parents say that they've really appreciated it. Strategy groups are when kids, they may not be on the same level, but they kind of need the same thing. Maybe we're noticing that they're reading too fast, and then their comprehension suffers. Or maybe we discover, this always happens after we teach them that they can abandon a book, because they love the word abandon, and so then they start abandoning every book, you know, that they pick up. So we might have to pull those children together and say, "Okay, you've had a chance to abandon a book now. Let's talk about how you can find one that you're really going to stick with and give it a chance." You know, any kind of, it's what we notice as we confer with kids and watch them in independent reading, and then we can pull children together and, you know, work together. I was in a class in second grade where it was a little group of boys who just really didn't like to read. Just didn't, and they were very freely sharing that, "Yeah, I like to read." And so the teacher was really working through different strategies and let the kids say, "What do you think, how do you think we could change that? What kinds of materials could we get for you to do independent reading with that might bring you around?" And I think we did talk about word study already. So we have our reading block with all those components, and then we have our Reader's Workshop, which is a really intense time. The teacher does a mini lesson, and then children are reading independently, and the teacher is making the rounds and conferring with the children, making notes on what they need, and always working with them toward independence. And then at the very end, there's usually a little quick share about, you know, the teacher might call on somebody and say, "You know, I noticed that someone was making some great connections today to prior knowledge. Would you share that with the rest of the class?" That kind of thing. So it's a really wonderful instructional time that all our teachers at the elementary school are doing daily. And now I'm going to turn it over to Sarah. Do you want me to turn this? Oh, God, yeah.
She doesn't trust me. I don't blame her.
She was like, "Just keep the technology easy."
I'm like, "Keep it simple."
Got all fancy stuff. You'll notice here, when you look at the model, it looks the same, and we intentionally kept this, the same diagram, for you to see that as students travel from fifth to sixth grade, they're really moving along in the same instructional pedagogy. They are still readers who are grappling with comprehension. They are still readers who are moving through those levels of text complexity. They are still in a model where our teachers are conferring with our students, where they're pulling small groups, where they're looking at where they are, where they enter, and where they need to go to be successful. We believe, I'm going to steal some words from a staff developer at Teachers College, Gravity Goldberg, who kind of laid out some tenants that I would like to share with you as well. We believe that all students are readers, though their processes may look different. We believe that all students can learn to make purposeful choices about their reading, so the choices of what they're reading independently and the way in which they're navigating their thinking throughout that process in order to be successful. We believe that all students can develop ownership of their own reading lives, and that really is the ultimate goal, that when students leave us in eighth grade and they go on to study literature in the high school, that they are leaving with a love of reading, a joy of reading, and a lifelong habit that they continue to build upon and flex like a muscle, because our brain continues to flex and grow as we keep adding to it with more and more knowledge. So we balance the components. So we balance the components of reading to draft a curricular plan that encompasses all of it. The difference from five to sixth grade is that instead of having a period for reading and a period for writing, we now begin to interweave the two together. So you'll see that I added the interactive read aloud with the shared reading. We're still reading to our kids. We're still modeling our strategies with our kids, both in small group and whole class. But now we're going to really be turning over the floor to the kids in order to do a lot of that strategy work independently. I also added in here the writing about reading, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, but as you go from fifth to sixth grade and then sixth to seventh grade, we're starting to ask kids more and more to cite evidence from the text. I listened as you were giving, paying homage to Mr., he left, Mr. Willoughby? Is it Willoughby?
Yes.
And each of you strategically gave a thought that you wanted to share, and then you jumped in with an anecdote or a piece of evidence that supported that thinking, and then you followed that up with your original thought and how that evidence actually showed what you were trying to say. And that's what we're trying to get our students to do, but we're trying to get them to do that at increasing levels of text. And so we are asking them to read some really complex work and then make some judgments about it in order to do that work. So the writing about reading happens in two different ways here. One is where we're asking students to track their reading as they're reading. Could be as simple as a sticky note, could be in a Reader's Notebook where they're tracking themes and work across texts. Or it could be something a little bit more sophisticated, like an eighth-grade literary analysis. But the students have to do that thinking at the fifth, sixth and seventh grade level in order to begin that practice work, in order to be successful, both in seventh, eighth grade and in the high school level.
Okay, slide one.
Okay, slide one. This also looks very similar. In order to do anything well, and Glenda gave the model of tennis, or the analogy of tennis, so I'll stick with that. When you become good at tennis, as all of our students are good readers when they come into fifth grade, our elementary school does such a phenomenal job of preparing them through those big five areas of reading. Now, we're not really asking them to comprehend for the first time, we're now asking them to hone that craft. And so, we are going to be giving them lots of different angles. So we're going to be showing them a new play. We're going to, you know, get, throw harder serves at them. We're going to be showing them a different way to serve, a different place to serve. And we're going to be asking them to practice, and practice, and practice. And so, whenever you are trying to hone something, you're trying to get better at something, you need time to do it. You need time to practice it. And so, we want to make sure that we're providing the opportunities in school and beyond for kids to practice that work. They are learning from the teacher through shared texts, through interactive read alouds. The teachers are explicit in their teaching and their thinking, and then the rest of the class kids are practicing it. They're applying it, while the teacher is conferring and giving explicit instruction through small groups. So this is where kind of the rubber meets the road. So we are really looking for our kids as we are tracking their reading across different areas. We are looking for them to make meaning. And so, we're teaching the reader. We're not teaching one specific text. "Number the Stars" is a beautiful novel, but it's not really important to me whether students know Anne Marie Johansson, and what she was wearing on one day, but rather that they can track how that character interacted with Ellen, and how that conflict was really important for her, and how she changed throughout the story. So it's not actually the story itself, but rather the thinking. I'm going to, again, rest on the shoulders of another researcher. This is a researcher of researchers. What a job that is, huh? John Hattie, who synthesized over 800, it was called a metasynthesis. He synthesized over 240 million classrooms, teachers of literacy, and he really went with the question of what does and does not support student achievement. He then published his work, or his findings, in a 2012 book called Visible Learning. And what he found that was most effective was the degree to which, or where students were most effective, and where most learning occurred, is the degree to which the teacher identified the learning, the process, as opposed to compliance, as opposed to just completing a task, but identified that learning. And so, he quoted and said, "So the key is to understand what is going on in each student's mind." Easy task, right? So in order to do that, in order to get in the mind of our students, we teach the process. We teach them how to attempt something, how to tackle something, and then we ask them to show us how they're doing it. And so, we're asking them to make meaning across disciplines. We're asking them to read closely in science and in social studies, and read like a scientist. We're asking them to read across genres. So we are showing kids how we can make meaning when we look at a narrative text, and how we can then read a information text and come out with some similar central ideas, though the text is structured differently. So an example of that might be in a historical fiction novel, where students are reading about a character that is traveling through the American Revolution, a particular conflict, and they may layer that with some informational text to understand what really happened at that time. So in the literature, you learn about the empathetic experience of that character, the human element, but in the information text, you're really coming out with a lot of similar themes, but you're learning about the information, the dates, the times. This is also when we're looking at across genres, when we're looking across disciplines, we're really incorporating a lot of domain-specific language. We're showing kids new words. We're teaching into some word parts. In science, for example, you're going to see a lot of suffixes and prefixes that are only specific to science, the IST and IST, biologist, and how kids can break apart the low G root word and apply it to different settings. We're teaching kids how to read in context, how to read the vocabulary in context in those areas. And of course, we're asking them to read with increasing levels of text complexity, because we really want them to come away from our instruction with the skills and strategies of how to tackle something very complex. And lastly, on this slide, reading is social. So we are holding kids accountable for the thinking that they're doing. They're tracking their thinking out loud, they're rehearsing, they're in reading partnerships, they're in book clubs, they're talking to their teachers about their reading. And they're not necessarily talking about Anne Marie Johansson, but they're talking about the way in which they are thinking about the text, the way in which they are crafting new thinking and tracking characters across different themes or across different texts. So we're asking students to really closely read, and it's not about the standards here, but it's about the reader. It's about that, you'll hear teachers say, "Keeping the author in the conversation," so that the kids don't go either one way or the other. We're not just saying what the author is doing. We're not just saying what we think about something, but we're interacting with it. We're using text evidence, and we're in a constant conversation with the author in order to really deeply mean and critically think, because we want our kids to take something away from each of the texts. This is the last one for me, right? But it's the longest one. So we're looking for students, so I just thought, "What does this look like, right? What does this look like in the sixth or eighth grade classroom? What are you talking about, the strategies and teaching the process?" I wanted to just kind of make it a little bit more real for you. So, we're looking at this as a ladder. So comprehension, for example, you know, Glenda was reading you these beautiful picture books and starting to think about some different messages that come. Our kids come to us knowing what a theme is. They come to us knowing what a message from a story is. Sometimes in fifth grade, that might just be a word. It might be that they're exploring love, or they're exploring friendship. And then the teacher is asking the students to identify, "Well, what is it that the author is trying to say about love, or trying to say about friendship?" And so, the standard in fifth grade implies or reads that a student will determine a theme of a story, drama, or poem from details in the text. So they're going to read their complex text that's at their level, depending on the different formative assessments that we have to know. And they're going to be in a unit called Thinking Beyond the Text: Theme and Symbolism. And they're going, the teachers are going to be helping them identify what that message is, and how the author is thinking that message through by the details. So they're citing that evidence in the text. They'll then work on that throughout the year, obviously. They're in a historical fiction unit right now, where they're continuing to look at how the characters are moving through the stories, and what the author is trying to say about the time period and about, you know, those particular characters. So what changes from fifth to sixth grade is that they're still determining a theme and central idea, but in sixth grade, they are looking at how it's conveyed through those details. So now, is where we start to incorporate some of those literary elements. So now, we're looking at characterization, and we're looking at the different ways that authors are crafting their characters in order to help the reader understand that theme. So now, we're studying characters, which they have done for many years, but we're looking at that relationship of characterization to theme. And so, it's intentional. It's purposeful that that secondary character came in, is interacting in that moment with that character. And so, now, the students are starting to name the literary element, and how that helps them to craft the meaning and understand that message. Next, students are continuing to do that work, so they're stepping up the rungs of that ladder, but they're analyzing it over the development, over the whole text. So maybe I'm studying characterization, maybe it's conflict, maybe I'm looking at setting, which now, in these complex texts, plays a role as a character. If you think of "To Kill a Mockingbird," that's very specific to that setting. And how does the author impart those different areas throughout the whole text? This is also a place where we're looking across different texts, and we're looking at the ways one author may do that. If you look at series texts, a lot of the books that our kids are reading right now are part of one, two, 10 books, and authors will continue the same kind of style, the same craft. Authors like Will Hobbs, who writes, you know, adventure books, he too follows a similar pattern. I'm a big fan of Jody Picolt, but they're big, thick texts, and about halfway through, I usually figure out the end and kind of get bored with it. Sometimes that happens. Other times, I just want to see how it plays out. But we're really looking at the craft here. We're paying attention to what is the author doing, and what are those intentional choices? If you think about this slide prior, this is also where we're doing some really close reading with the, and writing about reading. So this is where students are playing around and tracking their ideas over the course of a text, either in their notebook, or out loud, socially, and, you know, continuing to kind of hone in their theories and their ideas. And then, at the highest level of the fifth through eighth grade, and then, I didn't add ninth grade in here, though it does get even a little bit more complex, is now we're including the relationship to the character, setting, and plot. So now, I have a theme, and I have a constant interaction between the theme and all of the parts together. And so, now, this is where I might write a literary analysis, or I might track symbolism, and how symbolism exists within the characters, exists within the conflict, exists within the setting, so on and so forth, and how that helps me to make meaning. So every day, so what does that look like? Well, we go through that continual cycle with the arrows that Glenda showed you, where we wonder, "What do our students already know?" We create, we craft our questions that will engage our students, to keep them engaged in the reading process. And we organize our instruction. Our teachers are dancers. They're dancing every day, trying to balance out, you know, all of the different parts that they know our students need, in order to make this a really engaging, yet fruitful and exciting learning experience. Our goal really is to help every student develop a love for reading, to be independent, to really be transferring beyond a text and into their own lives, where they can be looking across different texts and across everything to see how our world is interconnected.
Yeah? Okay. I think you've really seen how this is all about balance. Our teachers are decision-makers every single day, and we work very hard with them, and they come to this wonderful group here at each school. And if they're stuck and need some advice about a student, the reading team is right there for them. So, we feel, we feel very confident and very good about our program. I know that you know this, but it's just, I think that what we have online now, the information that we have about the curriculum is really positive, and I've had a lot of parents tell us that it's been very, very helpful. And there's some other information in there, like information about book levels, and so on. So there's a lot there in the Language Arts Curriculum section. That is our New Canaan philosophy. And I think that the big thing that hits me here is that it's, this is a lifelong process. You never stop learning something about reading. We all try to get better at it, and I just think it's important to realize that, that the learning never really stops as a reader. And of course, we had to use Dr. Seuss to end our presentation. You can find magic wherever you look. Sit back and relax, all you need is a book. Just, I know that there will be questions, but I just wanted to thank you all for all your wonderful support over the years, and I've really appreciated it a lot. It's been fun for me, and you've been terrific for us, for our whole program. And I think it really shows with our children. They're so positive, and they do so well. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Glenda.
And Sarah, thank you, both of you. And Glenda, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the board, and I'm sure other people will speak as well, but you've brought so much joy and wonder to the kids in this district. I mean, I have a junior and senior, and I can remember their first days of kindergarten with you at West School, and, you know, reading to them, and all the hand-holding you've done for parents, you know? I mean, those summer reading lists that we all just are like, "What are we supposed to do with our children? What do we, you know, especially in those very early formative years that, you know, we're all trying to do the best for our kids, and you were just such a calming and wonderful influence for our kids."
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I've still got a few months left here, and I'm going to be crying the whole time, I think. Thank you.
So I'll open it up to the board. Hazel?
I just wanted to add just all sorts of compliments to you, the way you synthesized so much research about reading, and what's the best that's part reading, and put it all together into a program that really does grow, and become more integrated, and makes the reading experience, the most exciting part is that you can tell that you love the books, and I'm sure it's contagious to the children that you're working with. And what could be better than to have a really wonderful reading program and having children love books? So, thank you.
Sharon?
So I'll just add to the compliments, and just say that, and I mean this as a compliment, one of the most thorough and comprehensive curriculum reviews we've had on the board. So it's wonderful to really understand this program in so much detail. But what I want to say is, I think there's probably a lot of schools that have just, you know, wonderful curriculums, but I think what you and your team have brought is truly this goal of fostering a love of reading in our schools. And as a parent with three children in district, there have just been so many different opportunities to encourage reading and to participate in reading, whether it be through some of the tactics you outlined here, but I wrote a few others, you know, the One Book at West, or the Nutmeg Book Groups, or, you know, the Read Alouds at the book fairs. They're just, every day or every event, there's something there that is truly creating excitement and a love for reading, which is obviously so important in, for lifelong learners and for every aspect of a student's career. So, thank you for that, and I really don't have a question, I just wanted to just thank you for all that you've done in the team.
Any more questions or comments? Wow, wow, it was a wonderful, oh, Maria, sorry.
I know you're up there a long time, so I didn't want to hold you, but do you have themes by grade level? Because you talked a lot about the skills, like in fifth grade, and they keep building up. Do you have set themes for each grade level?
No, no, we have set concepts. So the students will explore, so our eighth grade, one of the recent units that they came out of was power and perspective. And so, they're studying power and perspective, and they're looking at multiple books. Some of them are, one in particular, they were in book clubs, so they were looking, you know, at one text, and then they were comparing that and synthesizing it across multiple texts. The seventh grade, Terry Reed is here from seventh grade, thank you, Terry. Seventh grade is, you know, leaving a perseverance unit right now, so they're like big ideas, big concepts. And then the students explore those ideas through the fiction and the nonfiction, and that just kind of trickles down in each of the grade levels. Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions?
I was just wondering if what else Glenda had in the podium?[1697.33][1697.33](Laughter). Was a lamp going to come out? Maybe the doll, maybe the costume.
I did bring, yuck, a big book of Little Horse. See? Absolutely. And this magnifies things. This is, this is a dust mite. Anyway, I wasn't sure how I'd use it, though, so I never used it. If anyone wants to borrow it, I've got it here.
Well, thank you very much for a really thorough presentation. Okay. The next item under Reports and Recognition is our budget update with Dr. Lettsi.
Yep, and first, before I do this, let me thank everybody for coming out in support of Glenda and Sarah here. But I certainly say that I don't take it personally if you all get up and leave, as I now give the budget update, which is much less colorful and has not yet been put into a picture book. So, certainly feel free. I know you all have early mornings with students tomorrow, so, thank you. Thank you. So the budget update is, just to share with the board, as you know, we, two weeks ago, about two weeks ago, we met with the town council, spent a few hours answering questions with the council, talking to them about where the budget is as a result of the Board of Finance's decisions. As you know, we began with a 276. As you know, we began with a 2.76. At this point, we're at a 1.6% with the Board of Finance's reductions that we've taken there. The town council cannot add any money to the budget, but can reduce. However, I would say that the meeting we had about two weeks ago was a very positive exchange of information. They were curious about different parts of our operating budget, and we were able to answer quite a few questions for them, and we engaged in, I thought, a very productive dialogue together. We also discussed the capital items, and the Board of Finance, again, made some decisions around reductions for the capital items, and I anticipate that both of these conversations will continue a bit on Wednesday night, which is our next meeting with the town council. That is a public hearing, and then we are also on the agenda for further discussion. We haven't received questions from them specifically. I think in part because we did, we have spent the time with them, and we did share with them the, excuse me, questions and answers from the other boards that we've received. So, the 35 or so pages of questions and answers covers a lot of ground, but I also think it's due in part to the clarity of the budget document that's been produced. So I think that also certainly is helpful in these dialogues and the discussions. So, we continue to move forward in our process. After Wednesday's meeting, the town council will have another meeting the following week in which they will be adopting the budget for the Board of Education, and of course, the whole town, to go forward from there. So, that's the very brief update, where we are certainly happy to take or answer any questions, but we are preparing for that continued conversation on Wednesday night, and hope that if parents or others have some things they'd like to share with the town council, this is certainly the opportunity to, at the public hearing on Wednesday night.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lettsie. Do I have any questions or comments? Sherry?
So, I just wanted to first thank Joanne and Dr. Lettsie for the thoroughness in the budgeting process and the budget document. And I know we, as the board members, have expressed this before, but I just also feel compelled to express kind of where we're at in the budget process and say that I felt when the board passed the budget at 2.76%, that was the appropriate budget to invest in our district and maintain the level of excellence that our community expects. Was very disappointed that the Board of Finance cut a million from operating, bringing it down to 1.6%, which is the lowest year-over-year increase in, on record.
At least 20 years.
On record. And it's also, I just think, important for everyone to keep in mind, also puts us in what I would call a deficit spending position, in that that year-over-year increase doesn't cover the contractual salary increases that are built into our system. So it, you know, we're already in a deficit spending position as we approach the town council. So, I just really implore the members of the town council to really think about, again, the levels of excellence that our community expects in education, and not only this year, but going forward, to really consider the level of investment that is required to maintain that level of excellence that we've all come to enjoy and expect in this district.
Thanks, Sherry. Any other questions or comments? Sangita?
I'm going to share Shay West's sentiments, you know, about the budget. I was also very disappointed to hear of the extent of the cut that was being made. You know, a million dollars is quite a bit of money, and the tough decisions that are going to have to be made in order to work with the budget that has been approved through the Board of Finance. And I also reached out to the town council members, and those want to express their opinion that, you know, we're going to be in a tough position, as it is for next year, to figure out what stays and what doesn't, what we can cover, because as Shay mentioned, we're in a deficit, you know, from our contractual obligations, that to then, people don't go and say, let's do a little bit more, just because they feel the need to do a little bit more cutting. You know, so to really think about, you know, what's right and what we want to invest in our students, what the community expects from our district. And so, again, a little frustrated by the fact that we had a huge cut, and hoping that this is the full extent of what will be at the end of the road.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lettsie. All right, moving on to our Statement of Accounts. Dr. Keating?
Good evening, thank you. So, what you have before you tonight is the February Statement of Accounts, year-to-date through February. We continue to track very closely to our reforecast that was in the budget document for 2018. There are no transfers in this report. I would point out that we've expended 59% of our budget. We still have 36.4% encumbered, so really, there's 4.5% of our entire budget that has yet to be either expended or encumbered. So we're very much on track to spending down our budget for this year, but again, we'll keep you updated on a monthly basis. There are two areas that we continue to monitor very closely, and that includes a special ed budget, which is an area that Darlene and I monitor regularly with our staff, and we will continue to do that. And then, secondly, we have had some unanticipated repairs in the facility area. For example, we've had a generator that went down at the high school. We've had some AC pumps and drives that had to be replaced. Then we had a major repair at West on the boiler plant, and those are things that are emergency repairs. So that account is currently in a negative position of $21,005.60. However, within that category of accounts, there is still sufficient funding that can be transferred should we need it. As we get closer to the end of the year, if we need to do a transfer into this account, we'll look at other accounts within the budget to do that. But those are really the two areas that, you know, we continue to monitor closely. We are currently tracking favorably in the substitute teacher account, which is a positive for us for this year. So that's really where we stand on the operating budget. Within this document today, you have the other fund reports, so you'll see on page six, the grants, and so all of the grants are listed there for you to review, and there is nothing unusual there. It's pretty much as we've presented in the past. The food services on pages seven and eight, and I just want to note one thing to you. We currently are a plus $123,916 for this current year. However, we will have months moving forward where the expenditures will exceed the revenues coming in, so like in April, we have a week off and those kind of things. So, this number will probably come down closer to $100,000 at the end of the year, but it's well within the boundaries of what we should be retaining in that fund. And then finally, you'll see the facilities rentals, donations, and the summer school on pages nine and 10. Not much to report.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to comment, because I think it comes up a lot in meetings with the town boards on the fund balance in the various accounts, and at our meeting this week, the, there was a discussion about how it's appropriate to have, you know, a fund balance of about 25% of expected, you know, expenditures or sales in that fund as sort of something to, you know, kind of manage with. The lunch fund, sorry, the lunch fund, yes. So just so people, when they ask about that, that was a discussion that we'd had, and so just so when you look at that number, you understand where it is.
And if I could just add, we really do need funding to start up a school year and to replace equipment as it goes down during the year, so it's appropriate to have a fund balance.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to action items. The first item on our agenda under action items is the All Sports Booster Club donation. If I could get a motion to approve the donation from the New Canaan All Sports Booster Club in the amount of $38,424.64 in support of winter coaching positions. Sangita, second. Penny. All those in favor? It's unanimous? Okay. Moving on to the East PTC donation. If I could get a motion to approve a donation from the East PTC of $17,512.06 for the purchase of innovative furniture to foster collaboration among students in the classroom. Could I get a motion? Hazel, second. Brendan. Any discussion?
Is this different than the furniture?
It's an addition. They have, and Chris, do you want to come up? Thanks.
So, yes, I was here not too long ago and graciously accepted a donation from our PTC for sensory resources and sensory equipment in the classroom, some stools, seat cushions, fidgets. This is furniture mostly in the form of tables, workstations, that would allow our classroom learning environments to really foster more collaboration among students, problem-solving, innovative thinking. I can show you a few images of what this entails. These are different shapes of tables, so rather than, say, a circle, where if students are trying to have a group discussion, they're actually further away. Now there are designs of tables that allow students, when they're having a discussion, to be closer to each other, and they yet still preserve sort of their sense of space as well, so those are a couple of designs. Another design that's just different than some of the tables that we've had in the past, and they really are designed to foster more collaborative work, more group work in the classroom. And in some of our classrooms, particularly in some of our upper grades, we have teachers who are interested in actually swapping out individual student desks and having full classrooms of these sorts of tables, so that they really can develop not only collaborative work in the classroom, but also a sense of community, and really grow that community in the classroom as students are moving around more flexibly in the classroom and sharing the resources there. We also have now tables that are whiteboard tables. So these would be in classrooms, and their entire surface is a whiteboard. So if a teacher is pulling a small group, rather than everyone having an individual whiteboard where they might do some work, the teacher might work with them and write on the board. They could, you know, show some of their thinking. If students are working on a project together and want to be drafting ideas or sharing ideas with each other, they have the dry erase markers and can sketch right on the table. We have our iPads. We can take a quick snapshot of it, snapshot of that idea and preserve it. So, these, certainly we wouldn't be outfitting an entire classroom with these, but we do have some teachers who would like to try these out as instructional furniture in their classroom. So I hope that answers your question in terms of the difference between what we are calling innovative furniture and, in the past, our sensory furniture purchase. Embedded in this also are a couple of additional standing desks that was originally funded with the sensory equipment, and we have had such positive feedback from students and teachers. And I know Ms. Carlson was at our PTC meeting where we had teachers speaking of the success of those standing desks, that we did want to have some additional standing desks available in our third and fourth grade classrooms.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to, I actually wanted to thank you for following up, because I know that at the prior meeting where, you know, you presented the prior donation of the sensory equipment, I had asked to have the board invited to that, and so I was really excited to go and see these pieces of equipment in the school, and I have to tell you, I would have loved a lot of these. As someone who doesn't sit well for long periods of time, I, it's just amazing to see what's available to these kids. So, and it was really nice to see, you know, they don't have to use them, and they can use them if they like, and they're not disturbing to other children, so it's just another way, I think, to connect with these kids, so it's great. Thank you very much.
So we have, if there are no other questions, does anybody have any questions or comments? Oh, Sangita.
Just out of curiosity, in terms of how many about, you know, are we getting a couple of them? Are we getting 10 of them, or some of these?
We have about three, three classrooms that want to purchase entire, you know, an entire classroom set of tables versus desks. And then we have, I can pull up our list, we have about seven other teachers who are interested in having individual tables to try out, and then, within our kindergarten classrooms, we're purchasing one for each kindergarten classroom. We are looking to replace their tables that they've had for many years, but we wanted to try out some of these new shapes and see how they work in the classroom space-wise, and then can make a decision moving forward as to whether this would be the design of table that we would want for their classroom in terms of all of their tables in the classroom.
Great, thanks. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Saks PTC donation. Could I get a motion to approve a donation from the Saks PTC for updating $500 for the purchase of lounge and learn furniture for use in the front lobby and outside the cafeteria at Saks? Penny? Second. Jen? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. So we had quite a, this was quite a day for PTC donations, so thank you again to the very generous parent community. All right, the next item is our consent agenda. You have before you the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Sherry, second. Tom? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. I'm assuming there's no comments from the public? So, next item is announcements and future business. Dr. Lettsie?
Sure, just briefly, we have another meeting a week from tonight. So April 3 will be our next meeting, and at that meeting, since it is in April, the board is able to set the graduation date. As you know, the, you wait until April to set that date, and then, once it's set, regardless of what happens, you can stick with that date for graduation. So, we'll have it to share with you a week from tonight, and at that point, we'll be a week further into the budget process, and we'll have a little bit of information about that, certainly Wednesday night's public hearing as well. We'll go from there. Thank you.
Great. So, we're at adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Sherry? Second. Jen? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.